It is 7 o'clock on Monday, April 22nd, 2019, and I call this regular meeting of the Richfield School Board to order. In attendance this evening, we have board members Peter Tensing, John Ashmead, Tim Polis, Christine Malik, and I am Crystal Brackey. We also have Superintendent Yunowski at the table. And we may still be joined this evening by student board member Nasir Folsen and board member Pellicle. I believe Diego Luis Nikio is celebrating his 18th birthday this evening with his family and friends who will not be joining us. Thank you to everyone for being here this evening. We are excited to have you with us. Our first item of business is to approve the agenda before us. Is anyone prepared to move the agenda as presented?
So moved.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Tensing and a second by Ms. Malik. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the agenda is approved. Moving into the information and proposals, non-action items section of the agenda, as this is the second meeting of the month, we will begin with time for public comment. And we received one advance request for public comment. So as Jennifer Lewis makes her way to the podium, I will provide a brief overview of our public comment policy. As outlined in Board Policy 216, we welcome comments from members of the public. We ask that you ensure your comments are consistent with our policy, especially around protecting the privacy rights of individual students and staff members. Members of the public have three minutes to speak unless translation is required, in which case, six minutes are provided. Our board secretary, Mary, will indicate when your time is drawing to a close. So thank you in advance for sharing your thoughts with us. Know that even though we will not be responding in the moment this evening, that we will take your comments very seriously and you may receive follow-up from one or more of us or a member of the staff as needed, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Jennifer Lewis and I am a Richfield resident. I am here tonight to talk with all of you on behalf of a group of citizens in the Richfield social justice community. We are a group of residents who share a vision of a sustainable community. Our group is aligned with the social justice community. We began working together when the city initiated its comprehensive plan update. So it's been a couple of years now that we've been working together. But we are all residents here. I do have Mia Simpson, she's in the audience, another one of our members. We may have a couple more trickle in, just so you know. Our focus of our group is to fill gaps in our community where we believe that sustainability mindfulness is needed. We are reaching out to you tonight to express our ideas for a better Richfield. Personally, I'm invested in Richfield and the Richfield Public Schools. Both of my children began attending the public school system in 2008 and both have since graduated, but I continue to be involved because I do see some opportunities for future generations. And I would like to propose some of those ideas on behalf of our Richfield Social Justice Group. We believe that coordinating with the city of Richfield, organic recycling program is important. We also believe that being creative through the teaching people at every age and in even some of the most unlikely moments and possibilities, it's important to start real young and then continue the mindfulness through all age levels. And we believe that there's some of that lacking right now. We also want to propose that generating synergy for the Richfield community, both with the public school system and with the city, is very important and is needed for the success of all of the Richfield community. So we believe in building partnerships and collaborating with some ideas. We all bring something to the table and we believe that communication is key, which is why I'm here tonight to share thoughts with you. Our request is that we'd like to learn what is currently being done in the school system regarding mindfulness of environment and sustainability. We'd like to also know if there's planned actions and then the timeline for those. We hope that we'll build for tomorrow by establishing goals in all of the capital improvement programs throughout the school district. We hope that there will be a structure with sustainability by evaluating the school policies. And that we also want to propose that the partnership with the city and the Richfield School District becomes stronger. So with that, Happy Earth Day.
Happy Earth Day.
Very much.
Very timely comment. Thank you so much for being here and I think many of us are going to be excited to continue the conversation. And just to share with people here in the audience and those who might be watching at another time, the next opportunity for public comment will be at our meeting on Monday, May 20th. So with that, we will move into the superintendent update, which this evening contains a presentation on our vision card related to student learning.
Absolutely. So we are moving into our fourth and final, fourth and final first draft of our vision card. So just as a reminder, we began this process of developing our measures over the course of last year and have been working to lay out drafts of vision cards to the board and to the public, talking about how we're doing on our strategic plan and helping to measure as we move into the second to last and soon to the final year of our strategic plan prior to beginning a new strategic plan process a year from now. And so what is a vision card? Just a reminder, we are publicly reporting on our accountability. We're reporting on our progress and it's also a way for us to continue to remain focused on our top priorities. Each of our strategic plan strategies has one card. And of those cards, we have a card focused on student achievement and student learning, positively promoting Richfield Public Schools, a healthy, supportive, safe environment, and also acquiring and aligning human financial operational technology resources. This is vision card A, and so we're focused on our student learning. We presented our original vision card B in summer of 2018 and have moved our way forward to this fourth and final vision card. Just as a reminder, we're going to continue to develop and evolve. We've taken feedback on each of our first three cards. We'll take feedback on our fourth card today and then we'll be presenting as a final effort, revised updated cards with revised updated data where appropriate. And so just as a reminder, vision card B was focused on positively promoting Richfield Public Schools to enhance engagement, recruitment, and retention of students, families, and staff. Vision card C, providing a help wealthy, our help welcoming, healthy, supportive, safe, and caring environment. Vision card D, acquiring and aligning human financial, operational, and technology resources to maximize organizational goals. And finally, vision card A, which we are working on today. So everybody also has this in their pocket, which allows you to follow along. There's a wide range of data points in this particular card. As we recall, we were trying to measure student achievement, but then we were also disaggregating demographically, how does our student achievement look? And so there are two full pages to this particular vision card, unlike the others, which we were able to get on one page. And then we also have the spreadsheet, which shares out each of these specifically broken down goals and the exact data points that these are taken from. And so as we look, you'll see MCA passage level and how we're doing from a proficiency level in grades three to five, six to eight, and 10 in both reading, math, and science. And then you'll see it demographically, looking at our achievement gaps between Latino and white students and black and white students in each of those same areas. We also note our gaps between special ed and non-special ed students and ELL students and non-special ed, or non-ELL students in these areas. In each of these areas, it shows what our achievement looks like overall. A general pattern of our achievement is it's below where we would like it to be and then our gaps are obviously larger than we would like them to be. Specifically in regard to our special ed and our ELL students, ELL students, the gap between ELL and non-ELL students in reading is an area of significant focus for us and ongoing work. Reading also, with the gap between Latino students and white students is very significant and something we are also focused on. And then moving over to math, we are also looking at overall proficiency in math, specifically an area of focus in the 11th grade level, and then also the gap between our Latino students and our white students on the MCA math. As we continue on, you'll note some areas of significant success with our launched early childhood program, our growth and our ongoing proficiency. We've talked about this in past. Our TS Gold measurements are extremely high and so we're achieving in the 95th percentile in terms of students exiting our pre-K programs proficient and prepared to succeed in regard to K through three education. Our math reading growth in both reading and math shows some promise, but an area of continued ongoing work as our math growth is higher than our overall proficiency. We're also seeing significant growth in terms of our ELL population and then also our ELL population on the MC, or on the access. And that assesses reading, math, and also language skills specifically. Overall graduation, we are looking to increase the number of students measuring proficient on all four of the ACT tests and showing that they're college-ready in every single area, which would match our overall growth on the ACT, which has taken significant steps forward over each of the last three years. And then our graduation rate is an area that we continue to want to focus on and target. And as a reminder, this is last year's data. We will be seeing what our 2018 graduation rate is actually tomorrow at 7:00 a.m. So we weren't able to incorporate that information into this card. So with that, that's a lot of information and a lot of data. I'm just going to remind you on the pages following, you see each of the specific exact scores that led to the overall rating of where we scored ourselves. As you'll see and as you'll note, there are areas, as you look at the pattern of all of the work that we're doing, our achievement has been an ongoing area of focus and obviously will continue to be an ongoing area of focus as we've seen significant growth in card D where our finances and operations have grown significantly or much closer to targets in areas we would like them to be. And areas of achievement are those areas that we have ongoing focus and obviously want to continue, continue efforts in those areas. So with that, I will open things up for questions.
My question has to do with, so given that this is sort of our first year of moving this particular format, as we move forward, you know, I think, I think especially with some of these areas where it is really challenging to move, literally move the needle. So we know that strategically persistence is important, persistence and patience, both, so that we don't find ourselves becoming frustrated too fast and giving up on an initiative that maybe is working and then that we change directions and then it becomes much more challenging obviously for our staff to be constantly changing directions. And so we know that patience is an important piece of ultimate success. So all of that is by way of setting up my question, which is, with these vision cards, do we have a sense of how we will see longitudinal progress that may be going out over a three to five-year time span?
So I think the question has a couple of different answers. So this is our first draft. So it's important to note that we will be making changes based on board input and so while that doesn't change our strategic plan, that will change how we report our vision cards. So for example, one board member pointed out that we don't currently have on this card our measurements that are in our strategic plan about gifted education and advanced coursework and challenging coursework. As we've worked our way through the cards, we actually removed that from vision card C, which was our overall environment because it didn't feel like it fit in that category, and then didn't yet put that into this card. And so as we look at iteration two, we're going to add some additional measures to some of our cards. Measuring, for example, the effect of our new marketing and recruitment efforts for card B, talking about some of the supportive and emotional learning work that we've done this year and measuring what those changes do overall as part of our strategic plan. But then also by making sure that we continue to measure the same areas, it allows us to monitor growth. And so rather than looking at changing initiatives based on our outcomes, these help us focus to make sure that we are noting specifically, this is exactly what our data tells us and we're going to keep looking at those same points, even if we add a few more or take one or two away and revise. And so this helps us maintain that focus on those top, top priorities. If we get this right and our vision cards are correct, we will be measuring and calling out publicly as an accountability system, these are the most important data points of our system. And these are the most important data points to make sure that our strategic plan is successful. Thanks.
Can I ask you a point of clarification? When you were describing some of the gaps between groups, I think you'd said ELL students, but as a category, ELL is, do you mean, within the spreadsheet, I believe it clarifies more correctly that it's students who, non-native English speakers?
Correct.
Which is not necessarily the same, right? ELL is almost like a funding category in a, in one, in one way, right? For example, a student, you know, comes to us and has, and the funding is finite and has a certain amount of time, but the student remains, of course, a non-native English speaker?
Yes.
And they continue to be counted within this?
No.
No?
No. The way, the only way to measure based on the MCA is qualifying for ELL services or not. After seven years and sometimes six years, one stops qualifying for service or one stops qual, but you're still in the category. If your access scores and your English proficiency grows to the point that you are no longer considered ELL from an MCA perspective and state perspective, you are now out of the category.
Though you would still technically, you know, yes, it would be accurate to say you are still a non-native English speaker, but it doesn't count in the data that way.
So is, is that a challenge to the metric in that if, if students, first off, I mean, as a, I'm not, as a baseline, meaning to improve this based on, on this, but if the students have success, theoretically, the category vanishes?
That's one of the inherent challenges in the category.
Right. The only, the only students who retain the, the label from, within the MCA system are those who have not demonstrated the, the level of proficiency desired by whoever sets that level?
Correct. Correct. What we do, yes, it is one of those challenging data points and the state measures us in those same data points. One of the things that we have done, we started, when I started in the district five years ago, we did not necessarily have a practice of exiting students when they were proficient. By putting a more rigorous, more rigorous filter on that, we actually went from 33% ELL students to 26% ELL students by exiting students who were proficient in English. While that cost the district funding, it also acknowledged what the students had done, which is become proficient in English. And so we felt it appropriate to acknowledge that, both from a labeling perspective and then also from a data point perspective.
Thanks.
So I don't have a question, but just I look forward to seeing the changes as we work through this and the addition of things like the high-performing students and things like that, so we get a big picture of all of our students' progress and growth.
And I think that touched on the, the question that I was going to ask, so I just want to make sure, maybe in restating it, that this is accurate, that in additional or new versions of this, there will be some ways that we are able to see and talk about student learning that are not solely standardized test-based. Because I think I voiced that when we talked about this the first time, is that this is almost entirely, with the exception of graduation, standardized test-heavy. And I, I believe that that data is important and matters and that we should also be striving to look at other things and make sure that we are taking a holistic view of student learning in our buildings for our students. So is that accurate, that there will be some things coming in that are potentially not standardized test-based?
There will be some added revisions in those areas. We don't have large system-wide data and one of the challenges of working on a strategic plan is thinking about, from a student learning perspective, we don't have very many measures that are beyond the MAP test and/or the MCA test or the ACT test. We do have other measures that are directly related to students. We had behavior incidences and suspension. We certainly can look at student engagement. We had attendance in regard to our environment. We also then obviously have the multiple measures across other areas. I'm trying to think of those specific to students and we'll have to look at what additional pieces to add in as we do those revisions.
Yeah. I think that'll be interesting as we do strategic planning for the next several years, is how we want to talk about student learning and what that looks like and how we quantify it.
Because I agree. I think I thought that, like, part of the vision cards was also an opportunity for us to share the things that are done really well, too. So I agree with your assessment about other things, other things.
Looks like Dr. Rode.
Dr. Rode is going to bail you out a little bit and help me out here.
And so there are other measures that we can use, but then that also means that those are smaller subgroups. And so we could look at advanced, students' participation in advanced courses and their pass rate, but then that's a smaller cohort. And I'm thinking of other things that would get to some data related to those smaller subgroups that we can, and we can brainstorm, the teaching and learning team can brainstorm with our administrators and, and directors to kind of come up with a couple more ideas, but the one that makes the most sense would be like participation in advanced courses by demographic data that's kind of been outlined by our other subgroups. Our white students, our students of color, our ELL students, in, in those smaller subgroups to see if we're hitting some of those metrics within the, within each group.
I'm just going to mention that one, one data source that I would, that we maybe could think about investigating is the Student Longitudinal Education Data System, I believe is what it all stands for. It's SLEDs.
SLEDs, yeah.
SLEDs, yeah, which I believe is the Office of Higher Ed that maintains that. But that, that does give a measure of post-secondary outcomes for kids several years out from their high school graduation. So I think it's an interesting data point. I do not know if we would find, how complete we would find that data to be or if there was some missing data problems.
It's not as accurate as, especially when you're talking about post-secondary where students end up and it's a little bit harder to track. It's not impossible, but then also the subgroups are a lot smaller. And then it does not include students who may leave the state because those students are typically in the MENSCU system for that post-secondary reporting. So, but sure, we can certainly.
Take a look at it.
Yep, take a look at it.
It may not be, may not serve our needs.
And another area that we could look at that I believe we have spoken about in the past is if we have students taking AP courses, how many of them pass the AP, take and pass the AP exam would be a good way to assess how we're meeting the needs of some of our more advanced students, so.
We've reported, but not as part of vision cards, college credit completed. We've reported AP test participation and completion. We've reported, well, extracurricular engagement and activities as different things and other, other pieces and we'll certainly look at that.
Thank you. Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Bravie.
With the more, more detail, we'll make the report longer and I know that there was some consideration around brevity. And so the more detail, and which certainly we can do, it just makes the vision card a lot longer. We won't be able to get it on that one page.
Or two.
Or two.
Well, though I will say, if there's any one of them that's going to be more than one page, I think it would make sense that it would be the one about student learning, since that really is at the center of what we do. So, yeah. Okay. Thank you. The final item in this section of our agenda is commendations and I believe we do have one to share this evening.
Yes. So to the Technology Department, Amanda Conair sent us a note to show gratitude at the superb job that tech did as they fulfilled their part of the move last week. Obviously, as you can tell, as this space has become more and more interesting, the district office is no longer here, it's actually down to the studs, I believe, behind those tape floors. And the tech team was not only good-natured while chaperoning the home base move, but they were speedy and extremely accommodating with the move was carried out. Amanda says she was proud again to be a Richfield Public School employee when she observed Cory laboring in the trenches with his team, pulling the cart, so to speak, right along with him. His efforts championed the pace for the day and the entire transition, or the entire technology team helped with the transition to the new day. So thank you to the technology team and all those who are beginning that work on our capital facility improvements. Thank you.
So the next item is approval of the consent agenda, which contains routine business items. As always, if there is an item that somebody would like to have pulled for independent consideration, that can be a motion at this time. Otherwise, we can entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved. Say it.
So we have a motion by Mr. Polis and a second by Mr. Ashmead. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the consent agenda is approved. We have three items of old business before us this evening, all of which are board policies, which are before us for a second read and this time contain proposed changes for our review and discussion. Superintendent Yunowski?
All right. So Board Policy 744 and Administrative Guidelines, Co-curricular and Athletic Transportation and Administrative Guidelines. We are in an awkward, we'll call it the mid-phase of the review from the Extracurricular Advisory. So we actually aren't going to be bringing this back on May 6th. We had anticipated they would have met a second time and done some things we talked about, like helping to define the difference between co-curricular and extracurricular, but we were snowed out. And so the team did not meet for the Athletic Extracurricular Advisory. So we worked with the input that we had and made some of the changes, changing some of the language to activity and trying to talk about transportation, talking about how we will transport students, which would obviously not be by adult employee car ideally, but by commercial carrier or buses, only on approved trips in rental vehicles or with oversight, helping lay out what the discipline looks like for transportation and then taking some of those additional steps to align the policy to our practice. The two things we really hadn't gotten to yet, one has to do with that language and definition change. The other piece has to do with the question around, right now, transportation is provided to athletic events and activity-based events, but there was some question around practices. And so there are some sports that don't practice on-site and so what do we do with that? So for example, the hockey team practices from time to time in Chaska. And so do we transport to practices for hockey or do we not? We also have gymnastics and some other sports. And so right now, and our practice are, that we do not transport for that, but that's something we had larger conversation about as, as an Extracurricular Advisory and we want to get some of those things finalized as far as recommendation prior to coming back to this room. So this just provides those updates and then also the MSBA model policy along with that. With that, input, questions, thoughts, feedback?
I would definitely be eager to hear what the group has to say about the practice transportation issue because I think when we're talking about daily practices that are happening offsite and students are responsible and family and guardians are responsible for transportation, that feels like it could be a real access and potential equity issue for who is unable to participate.
I have a question about the letter that has to be submitted prior to the event saying that a child is going to go home with someone else. And I have no idea how this works because my kid's too young for this, but it says here in the past, it would be, it was handed to the coach. I want to know how many parents, I, I just don't know how much paperwork this is and how, how much of a mess for parents are like, oh, wait, I actually can go and get my kid and I didn't show this earlier or like, why is that there?
So you summarized a very significant conversation we actually had at Extracurricular Advisory. So we send coaches out and they are responsible for our students and technically they are responsible until they return to school. And so there was a lot of conversation around, do you release students to their parents if they are at the game or at the practice? Well, typically it's at a game. Do you then release students with a parent's friend? Who do you release them with and what does that process look like? And so the guidelines have to cover, how does, how does the school district make sure to monitor students and make sure that our students are going home in appropriate fashions? And so we were looking at that process and what does happen. Right now, there are multiple things that actually happen. There are sports where coaches are given written permission on-site. There are sports and times where a parent's saying, I'm taking my kid, has been enough. And there are times where it is required a day in advance to have a written note saying that, that this person's going to go home with an adult, their parent. So we're trying to create a process to systematize that, but obviously there is complexity. The other component that has happened is we have people who you can go to something farther away and people are planning to pick them up and then what if they don't come? And so there's a lot of complexity. We just want to make sure that we are creating the policy and guideline that not just aligns to practice, but also aligns to obviously our first, our first necessity is, which is ensuring the safety and safe transportation of all of our students. So it is very complex.
It says, "Safe to say accept parent that I only need to submit this once and it will be valid for the season or every single time I have to..."
That would not be safe to say. So there was no coach who was satisfied with, my child can come to a game and I will sometimes pick them up, because then we don't know when you're coming and when you're not. because then we don't know when you're coming and when you're not.
No, but I'm thinking more of a release, like when you go to, your children go to school, that, you know, release to parents in case they go pick them up. So, there's documentation that.
Right, so here is the complexity. Imagine your child's in Chaska, watching a ga, or participating in a game, right? Will you go pick them up, or will you not? And the coach is expected to have a list of all the student participants, monitor who is being picked up and who is not. And so, a blanket permission would not identify whether you're going to the Chaska game or not.
That day.
That day. And so, similar, it's, it's, think about for your classroom, a field trip, and parents picking them up, if you go to a field trip to Valley Ferry, parent coming there to pick them up, or not? And how is you, as a teacher, would have to monitor that?
Now, if I go pick up my kid, and I don't have the letter, is my child hostage?
We are, no, and we are trying to work out what that would look like, right? And we're trying to work out how that works.
And all this paper is making me nervous, like just.
Right, and so that's why we were talking about, you know, part of the conversation we had was, well, half an hour before the bus leaves, an hour before the bus leaves, and a letter in advance. How do you monitor that?
Right, without a letter, you can imagine a case where a parent could take a child, but it's actually inappropriate. That child might, that, that parent might not have custody on that day.
Like, I just need a child swap outside the door here, that's why I wasn't here in time, and I'm just thinking of
spouses like mine, since we don't watch the meetings on YouTube, like.
I can see how it gets tricky.
Absolutely, very tricky.
So, I mean, it, it feel, it feels like, it feels like presumably, the solution, or hopefully, part of the solution is good communication, right? And, and presumably, that's, that's the key to having this unfold, would have too many.
I'm very nervous for middle school and high school, let me just tell you that, really, that.
Right, good communication and planning, but maybe that's, that's a lot of that sometimes. It's interesting, though. And I think, yeah, I mean, I think that framing it as, framing it the way you did, Steve, not only from the perspective of our responsibility to sort of safeguard the safety of the students, there's also the perhaps less perpetually critical, but kind of emotionally nice piece of, you know, that, that transportation is a time for like team, team building and all that kind of stuff. So, I think it is appropriate to have that be sort of the default expectation that, that the team is, is staying together until they return back to school, so. It's all kind of how you frame it up, I suppose.
It is, right, as reported by the Athletic Director, the typical common practice out there is without a specific note for a specific event, if a student goes to an activity with the bus, they go back to the school on the bus.
That sounds much better.
Right, and that is, I mean, that is what the typical practice is. And then, if there is a note in advance, organized in advance, and that's the system we're talking about, that is, that can be the exception.
So, on an inception basis, this makes sense. I just, from how it looks like in paper, it does a lot of like variations, and that's where things get really tricky, and.
Absolutely.
We will look for further clarity with the expert.
Yes, we will have further clarity and further changes around each of those pieces as we continue to move forward.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, so Board Policy 744 will certainly be coming back to us, not at the next meeting, but in a.
I believe the second meeting in May should return, barring a freak, knock-on-wood snowstorm, or other reason for school cancellation at the next Athletic Extracurricular Conference.
Okay, Board Policy 409.
All right, 409 is around mandated reporting of child neglect and administrative guidelines to go along with that. I'm bringing this up to speed with the policies and practices and updates of our statutes. And so, you see our redline copy. We did learn as we studied and worked with MDE that maltreatment mistake, which was in there, that had been, talking about childcare centers, does not actually apply to us. So, that is something that has been removed in this next iteration of the policy. We have tried to add based on clarification from the board on page seven of this policy to answer one of the board members' questions. There was a question about having to do with MDE and then also us reporting, and how do we do that? And then, how do we also align to our other policies? So, at the page seven, line 15, if the investigator of the child maltreatment is a police officer, we noted that Board Policy 977 and Guidelines 977-1 will be followed. That's something we just revised recently. We also then on line 41 of the same page, added the word additionally, which we think substantially changed the meaning of that paragraph, where the alleged perpetrator is believed to be a school official. The school district shall additionally conduct its own investigation, basically showing that we are, of course, sending that into MDE, because that is the requirement and expectation, but we will additionally investigate that situation, which is what we would do. Similarly, as we go down further, restating it again, if the investigator's a police officer, we'll follow 977. Clarifying that this policy will appear in school personnel handbooks where appropriate, so it wouldn't be in all handbooks, but in the appropriate handbooks that go out to staff and for staff training. And then also, which has happened in our guidelines, our school district will develop a method of discussing this policy with school personnel, and we will review the mandated reporting process along with this policy, putting in the language that is often in our policies to suggest that we should be having guidelines to go along with that. So, that is the policy update to 409, within those pieces into 409-1, the guideline. And so, there was some confusion in the wording, and so, we changed that around MDE in the guideline, basically talking about although a report may be to any of the other agencies, the actual expectation is that it is reported to MDE, and if appropriate, it goes to another agency. So, we altered that wording by removing, it said, "and/or" MDE, which means MDE for sure, and it could have an additional organization that we're reporting to. Then similarly, we wanted to clarify that school administrators, social worker counselors, or other professionals may partner in reporting. However, the employee taking the initial report is legally considered to be the mandated reporter, because we wanted to clarify that, which allows us to restate it in training for school staff. And then, within the guidelines, which is typical of our guidelines, we talked about training of school staff. So, as part of our orientation, and we do do this, we wanted this down, that all staff are informed by their supervisor and in our training of the responsibility to be mandated reporters. Our PS administration provides and will provide ongoing support and training and awareness. And then additionally, we will do additional training for administrators. And so, as we have talked about, our HR team and our teaching and learning team are working on a policy-based training, which will be launched beginning next fall for all staff, which will have begun with administrators in August, as we have gotten to these substantial trainings that actually impact the daily lives of our employees and our students more often. So, we'll begin that training this fall. Questions about 409 and 409-1?
So, I, I think I've got, so assumptions that I just want to make sure are correct. So, in policy, when we get to the end of the policy about, this is Section 8, dissemination of policy, the annual review for compliance with state law, is that a review to be conducted by the administration or the school board or other staff?
Uh, we will need to clarify that, so it is not clear in the policies.
I was gonna say, if it is, if it is that, that we're expecting the school board to sign off on this annually, we just need to make sure that that particular exception is built into our review cycle.
And that is how I read it, that we, that we would look at the policy every year to make sure that any legal changes are incorporated.
Right, and, and this could be as simple as administration notifying the school board that there are no legal changes, but it sounds like it. Second question is to the guidelines. I do definitely appreciate that you have added Section 4, since I kind of requested that. So, my question is, because I am going to ask for more specificity, when we talk about ongoing support, what would be sort of our minimum acceptable frequency that we would say, "Oh, yeah, that's ongoing support." So, in other words, if we were training our student, our staff every 10 years, would we stand up and say, "Oh, yeah, that's good enough," or do we set a higher bar? So, that's, that's my question on sort of what do we want to give ourselves as at least, at least a basement for that minimum acceptable frequency, so we have a benchmark to adhere to.
And are you suggesting that would be in the guidelines and or the policy?
I'm suggesting that would be in the guidelines.
Section 4, number 2, for example, where it says our PS administration will provide ongoing support. I think the question is, what is the right, what is the right expectation?
My concern is it's a little squishy, and while I wouldn't want to ever imply that anybody would try to get by with less than doing an excellent job, the squishiness there is that different folks may have different idea of what ongoing support actually means. And then, my, I guess I just have a concern that in something where the stakes are as high as this could be, that we should be less squishy.
We will look at what an appropriate date timeline would be for that.
Yeah.
Any other questions to follow that?
It's like not, so this will also come back for a third reading?
This will come back, absolutely. We'll look in that particular area.
Great. Last but not least is Policy 410, mandated reporting of maltreatment of vulnerable adults.
All right, and so we'll be quicker with this one. So, this is a similar policy with the similar types of updates, and helps us guide that overview of vulnerable adults within our system. So, we did not make substantial changes to this, so we will just leave that out there for questions.
I do, I mean, I think again that, just as we stated last time, that some of the same, much of the language in here is very similar, and so, I think basically, I feel that it would be the same general in terms of the ongoing support standard. We may, for this one, it does feel like we might be able to target that to, because not all of our staff necessarily are working with this population, so we could target that to staff who would be like, be likely to be working with that vulnerable, that vulnerable adult population, which sounds like it's probably a small fraction of our staff.
Any other comments? Okay, we will see 410 back here again as well, then.
Sounds good.
All right, so we have a number of new business items before us this evening for the first time, and we'll start with one item related to our facilities projects. Mr. Holgi, our Chief Administrative Officer, will present this, and, and I expect several other of the items that are soon to come.
We've taken over a couple. So, this first item is a request for authorization for the Ritual Dual Language School Facilities Project Change Order Number 1. This change order results in a net reduction of $102,420 in costs. This is something that ICS and WOLD have been working in partnership with LS Black Constructors to identify efficiencies that we can realize. If you remember, when we approved the bid award for our DLS, it came in higher than what we had originally projected. And so, we've been looking at those plans and identifying, are there some efficiencies that we can realize? This is some efficiencies realized as part of changes to the HVAC system and mechanical system. We don't see that it will have any impact on the work and production of that HVAC system. It's just a different way of handling it and kind of moving through with that system. So, it's not overbuilt, but it's built appropriately.
It's always nice to have a change order that results in savings.
Significant savings.
If there are any questions, I'm sure Mr. Holgi can entertain them. Otherwise, we could have a motion to approve the RDLS Facilities Project Change Order Number 1.
And will we accept the recommendation for a change order?
I will second.
So, we have a motion by Mr. Ashmead and a second by Mr. Tensing. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the change order is approved. Next is a request to approve an updated budget for the 2018-2019 school year.
Correct. And this is something that we do on an annual basis, and it's about this time when we look at our revised budget, having, asking the board for approval for those changes. In May, we'll be coming back with a preliminary proposed budget for 2019-2020, and asking for final approval on that proposed budget for 1920 in the June board meeting. This is something, again, we do on an annual basis, and just to kind of highlight, we look at this revised budget process, and it is the specifically 2018-19 revised budget, which is the current year that we are in. When we look at this, we really look at budget changes that reflect both revenue changes as well as expenditure changes, and basically just trying to true-up and right-size our budget to make sure that we have some good numbers moving into our planning for next year, and that the board has had a chance to take a look at any of those changes that are pending with this, I mean, final budget. As a net impact, our revenue updates, the general fund revenue is down $976,929. Really, two key factors that tie in here, and it is the enrollment projections that we had compared to the actual enrollment that came in, and that we were realizing, we've talked about this back since the October enrollment projections or enrollment count, and looked at that, and so that resulted in a net reduction as well as a reduction, and it's going to show up both in the revenues as well as in the expenditures in our federal programs. So, we have projections moving into the budget season for what we're anticipating receiving in those federal programs. We never really know until summer when it hits, and so we've made reductions both in the revenues as well as in the expenditures, so it's going to offset in both areas. In the general fund, the expenditures were down $597,762. So, the positive thing is our revenues were down, but our expenditures were also down as well, so that offsets each other a bit. The key changes here are truing up our actual staffing. If you remember, we put some contingency positions in place that we didn't end up using because our enrollment was down, so that's one of those efficiencies, as well as those federal programs not being expended as what had originally been budgeted. The other thing that we saw and made some adjustments this year is an increase in expenditures for, expenditures for our special transportation. This includes both special education as well as our homeless highly mobile transportation. It's an area that we've been monitoring and making regular adjustments in that. Those are coming in higher than what we had originally projected, so that is an impact also on these expenditures. What that means is the net impact is a reduction of $379,167 to that general fund activity. So, as the revenue came down and the expenditures also came down, that net impact is $379,000. We do anticipate a net increase to the general fund reserve in the unassigned, assigned, and restricted of $370,427. This is less than what we had projected in the FY19 budget, where we were projecting an increase in those reserves by $750,000. If you remember, one of the things that the board was committed to is that sustainability and trying to grow that reserve. Now, in the end, the net positive on this is our end-of-year reserve in our general fund is actually projected to be up $188,817 from what we had originally projected as part of the budget. That was impacted specifically as our fund balance came in, ending the 17-18 year, that was higher than what was projected, and that helped offset that reduction from what we were projecting in our reserves here. So, this is just kind of some of the details that are in there in the revenues, and just kind of highlighting that $767,636,000 is what was adopted, we are projecting to come in at $66,659. There's that $976,000 reduction in our revenues. In the expenditures, $66,887 is what we had originally projected. Right now, we're anticipating $66,289,000, so that reduction in expenditures is that $597,000. And you can see a lot of that's in the staffing, the employee benefits, as well as the supplies are currently projected to be down as well. And then, that federal is the largest piece in that revenue reduction area. General fund summary, this is just the bigger picture. If there's questions, we can go back to this one. And then, that expenditure as well, and then this just looks at by program, specifically, things are generally relatively consistent. We see regular instruction, expenditures are down $451,000. A chunk of that is that contingency staffing that we had projected three FTEs that we didn't end up using, as well as the special education in the federal programs area, for those two largest categories. We look at the other funds as well. Very little changes in here. The biggest changes in here are changes to the Internal Service Fund, which are self-funded insurance programs. We're projecting revenue to be up about $175,000 in that program from what we had originally budgeted. That really aligns with the staffing and some assumptions we were making based on enrollment. And then, we've also made some. And then we've also made some corrections here with the Internal Service Fund expenditures. Right now, it looks like they're going to be trending upwards of about five hundred and seventy-two thousand than what we had originally budgeted. And so it's just kind of right-sizeing those areas. We do still see a small increase in the fund balance in that area as well, so it's relatively consistent and still funding itself in those areas. Net impact on the fund balance, you can see here we have the unassigned fund balance was originally projected to be at five point four-seven percent. Or our actual five point four-seven percent is the actual of July one, 2018, the audited fund balance there. With the revenues and expenditures, we see that five point four-seven percent remaining consistent, but that is up two hundred and thirty-one thousand. The difference really is in what the, that percentage is calculated based on the expenditures of that fiscal year. So the three million, three ninety-two was based on, that percentage calculation was based on expenditures from previous year. This amount, that's two hundred and thirty thousand dollars more is based on the projected expenditures per current. So unassigned is relatively consistent. You can see the different restricted accounts in some of those categories and then drilling down to that total general fund. Right now, it's at nine million, one fifty-two at the end of the eighteen year. It increases three hundred and seventy thousand up to nine million, five hundred and twenty-three thousand, three oh six. When we looked at that number as part of the adopted budget back in June, it was nine million, three hundred and, I think, eighty thousand dollars. So that's that category where it still is increasing and we're still ending, basically where we were anticipating we were going to be ending at the end of last year. General fund or the other funds, just kind of a highlight of that, again, very little changes within that category other than a small amount in that Internal Service Fund, a fourteen thousand dollar increase based on current numbers. So with that, if there are any questions on any of the details that are included in that, otherwise we would seek your approval tonight for that revised budget so that we can use that as our baseline moving forward.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
So is it, is it, is it, I, sorry. It looks like it's just happy coincidence that we're at five point four-seven for both the prior year and our projected. I mean, I just was kind of curious about the math there.
It's pretty close in there, so it's happy coincidence that we ended up relatively close. We looked at some of the restricted accounts. We did not want to expend down any of that and so we made sure that we were making adjustments in restricted accounts when that was available. So that we have that consistency in that area. And then that total fund balance still remains at that higher level from what we had projected.
With all the numbers that are going up and down on the sheet, that one is generally where I put my first eyeballs.
It's what we tend to focus a lot on as a board, for sure. Looking to see if there are any other questions or comments. Okay, then we could entertain a motion to approve the revised budget as presented.
I move that we approve the revised budget as presented.
Second.
So we have a motion by Ms. Malik and a second by Mr. Ashmead. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the revised budget is approved. Next before us is a resolution to place an administrator on unrequested leave of absence, which is a continuation of an action that we have initiated in previous meetings.
I will take a quick pause and let HR Director Bernice Nielsen take a deal with this.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Holgy. Before you, you may remember that on March eighteenth, you approved the resolution to put an administrator on a proposed unrequested leave of absence. Tonight, we're bringing forward to you the actual action to put that administrator on an approved leave of absence.
Thank you.
So, manager, I will move the resolution as presented.
Second.
So we have a motion to approve the resolution by Mr. Tensing and a second by Ms. Cole. Any discussion? As this is a resolution, I will pull the board. Cole?
Aye.
Tensing?
Aye.
Ashmead?
Aye.
Malik?
Aye.
Polis?
Aye.
The chair votes aye and the resolution is approved. And we have another resolution before the board this evening related to, and make sure that I have this right, existing board policy seven thirteen and post issuance debt compliance policy?
Correct.
Okay.
So this originally was approved back in 2016, I believe it was. And it really came out of recommendations from Ellers and Associates, our municipal advisors, looking at our bond issuance and regulations around IRS compliance in those areas. They, due to changes, they have come forth with some additional recommendations as part of their quality control with their partner organizations and made recommendations for changes in those areas. You can see those recommendations highlighted. In general, the policy seven thirteen, those changes really are primarily occurring on page two of that document where it just provides a little bit of clarity and terminology that kind of updates to their pieces in the numbers of the items that are falling in that. At a minimum, the post-issuance debt compliance procedures for each qualifying obligation will address the following and just some modifications, but relatively consistent in those areas. The bigger changes really are occurring within the procedures and the recommendations that they have put forth about some additional items and some clarification that help support our director of finance and the finance department in their monitoring to make sure that they're evaluating all the areas that the IRS has taken a look at to make sure that those that are administered appropriately retain preferential treatment in our debt issuances and our compliance with IRS.
So the main, main response that I had while reading this policy was, boy, Mr. Gilligan has got a lot of stuff to keep up with there.
That's true.
But it looks like this is just kind of a roadmap for him to make sure he's in compliance and.
Yeah, so, and, yeah, so a lot of this ties in with our audit process and Mr. Gilligan does have those responsibilities. We do partner effectively with Ellers and Associates in our compliance in these various areas and they help support our reporting requirements as well. So it does, unfortunately, it does take a team to do this work. But as a board, it's hopefully helpful for you to know that there are multiple points of perspective that are evaluating this and reviewing this and that this really, especially the guidelines, are meant to articulate a little bit more specifics about the details that need to be watched for.
So, I mean, obviously, anytime we're approving something in the policy, especially with this level of specificity, there's the nervous side of, are we putting something into policy that is so specific that we're sort of tying our hands a little bit? But what I think I'm hearing from you is that this particular process is one that would be sort of amenable to that specificity and where the specificity might even be helpful to sort of make sure we're checking off all the boxes. Is that about right?
Correct.
Okay.
I just want to ask, this, so who did, who directed and handled the rewrite here?
Ellers and Associates.
Ellers and Associates.
So their review team is making these recommendations with the various groups that they're partnering with on this post-issuance debt compliance policy, much like we would partner with a legal counsel or MSBA on making recommendations for how are we fully compliant in these areas.
And we're content with the resources they provided or documents to support why these changes were necessary?
We are confident in the number of districts that they represent and do this work with and that they are fully vetting this and have strong knowledge about the tax complications associated with this. A lot of this drives based on regulations that have come out and recommendations, knowing what IRS is looking for when they're reviewing these different plans and what their agencies that they're partnering with are recommending for them as well.
Is there a deadline by which this needs to be approved?
I am not aware of a deadline. So if the board would like to consider it for another meeting, there is not an immediacy where it needs to be completed prior to the end of April. If there are specific questions, it would be helpful for us to be able to go back to Ellers on those. Or in the meantime, if there's things that you have, then we can come fully prepared with that information.
I don't have anything meaningful right now, just that typically when a policy comes in front of us for approval, there's a read or a second read and sometimes a fifth read, depending if we're going back to that. So I, that's my, my preference would be to try to digest this over a longer period than Easter weekend.
I have the same question and was also grateful to hear that it was not something we needed to act on tonight. So we can take a little bit more time. And just, when we do take action on this, approving the resolution changes the board policy, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So, and Mary and I had some conversations about, is this a resolution? Is it just approving the board policy? There are times where our partner organizations are looking for that more formal language. It really, in different boards, operate in different ways, so it's a similar format to what is just approving the policy. And I think that that just kind of specifies it. The nice thing is, if and when we provide documentation, those formal resolutions just give the language that's connected with that a little bit differently. So you are changing the board policy by approving that resolution.
Thank you.
So given the pattern of how we typically first read and that it isn't time constrained, I'd like to ask board members to give this a read and so that feedback can be sent through Mr. Holgy to Ellers if there are any questions that we have or things. Obviously, this is a very significant, substantial rewrite with some new IRS code updates and things like that. And so if board members could take time with that, send over the next week or so information to Mr. Holgy if there are questions or things to change. And then we will look at rewriting further and bring you back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next is a resolution to authorize the application and implementation of the Safe Routes to School Grant.
Thank you. So back in 2014, the city and the school district partnered together, along with Bloomington Public Health, to develop a safe routes to schools. It really is a partnership that's engaged both the planning from the city standpoint as far as bike paths, identifying walk zones, identifying safe walking areas and trying to promote education so that as families are, if their students are walking to school, there are routes that are identified that are safer, that there are appropriate signages, that there's appropriate enforcement within the community to really make that happen. One of the things that MINDOT and the federal government has identified is there are challenges in the resources that are available to school districts and local communities to implement that more fully, especially from an educational program standpoint. So Bloomington Public Health came to us with an opportunity to apply for a local grant coordinator. It would be a halftime position available to the district funded by MINDOT as part of a three-year program to partner with the city in reviewing those plans, identifying opportunities and then having each one of our elementary schools, along with our middle school, identify a task force or a committee that helps promote that work at that local school site. As we look at transportation opportunities and transportation barriers, both in our busing services but also for students and families whose children are walking to school, promoting that communication so that if we have biking going on, that we have bike clubs or access to bikes and resources that way, that we are partnering perhaps with developing school patrols at each one of our school sites for kind of key crossing areas, making sure that we have appropriate oversight and then also working with the city in the enforcement of those areas so that if we are encouraging safe routes to schools along certain pathways, that we don't have cars that are speeding by that are putting students at risk when they're crossing paths and things like that. So this coordinator really would work hand in hand with Bloomington Public Health, the city, as well as the school district, promoting those opportunities within the organization. So that request here, there's a grant that is due at the end of this week. So this is a little bit more time sensitive on if there's support for this or at least applying for that grant. That would seek support from the school board for that position. The one commitment that we are looking at is what is our long-term impact so that this is sustainable and not a three-year grant that is funding a position and not able to be continued. What we anticipate, this looks like, is this halftime position is going to be sufficient to develop the programs, develop the resources so that after that, it will be more of a sustainable program that can be monitored by the administration of the building, as well as perhaps a coordinator on a stipend basis to help kind of oversight and promote the communication as well as embedded within the curriculum at key areas so that we have those opportunities available. So developing those communication tools over the next three years, partnering with the city, partnering with our schools to really kind of build that capacity to have these things in place so that our students are able to get to and from school safely, whether or not they ride a school bus or not.
Thank you.
Just to clarify what you'd said, so if I follow correctly, we, the grant allows us to hire someone or provides funding for us to hire someone in a halftime position for three years.
Correct.
The end of that three years, the funding has vanished.
Correct.
The third-party funding has vanished and we have that person and the role they used to do is now, they've built up a system that can be handled by the building admin or some other committee.
By the building admin or a part-time position that, I guess, one of the options that we've talked about is if we have a, so one of our schools has a school patrol coordinator, it helps facilitate that. But that would be a logical place where that would be able to sit within a stipend-based position that's just an added service versus a full-time staff position or a part-time staff position, that that is their dedicated assignment. So looking at teachers who can help facilitate and promote that communication at the building level, partnering with administration, perhaps one of our curriculum departments and our grade levels in specific areas.
And when, the funding that's provided, what role is this person in? We have a number of, you know, we have different categories of employees, so is.
So this position, we would anticipate, would sit in our miscellaneous pay rates, so not into one of the categories fully. So it wouldn't be a teacher contract or an admin contract, but it would be a miscellaneous pay, especially because it is just a three-year position. We may look at individuals who have some educational training background curriculum, but it isn't requiring a teaching license per se or isn't requiring an admin license in that capacity.
Do we anticipate that it's easy to find a person with the requisite qualifications?
At this point, we do not know. We haven't posted the position. There are, there's a sense that there are a number of community members or individuals who work in this wellness area. So it really is kind of a coordination between wellness where you're promoting bicycling, walking to schools, things like that, as well as safety within those areas. It is anticipated that there will be a committee that's put together that has multiple capacities. So a lot of this would probably tie in with some project management skills as well as some relationship skills. There are a number of people that work within these areas. The city Minneapolis, or the Minneapolis Public School District has a full-time position that this is a part of their assignment. We'll see, we are applying for the grant and have worked with Bloomington Public Health to identify opportunities.
And within the grant, do we ask for a specific dollar amount or is it whatever we happen to to hire a person for that halftime position and presumably benefits and?
There's limits within it and I'm not remembering the exact dollar amount, but I think it's between twenty-five and forty dollars or twenty and forty-five dollars per hour is kind of what they recommend for that, what they're seeing that position would be on a statewide basis. And so they've given some guidelines and we take a look at what, how it fits into our system to make sure that that fits into a similar leveled position from what we would see for judgment decision-making, problem-solving skills and some of the things that we use for our job evaluations.
And when we determine the cost, is it total cost of employment or salary alone?
We budget in salary and benefits as well as program administration costs. So some of the communication printing and things like that will supplement that.
I think if we receive this grant and end up hiring a person, it will be helpful to have information come back to us about what does this, what does this look like for us? Who do we hire? What are the biggest things that they're working on maybe in their first year? I think that would be helpful in terms of making this real.
I would just kind of reinforce one of the pieces. As we started this process, so Bloomington Public Health came and said, hey, here's an opportunity. We know that this has been something that the city and the school district have been working on since 2014. We had a chance to work with Jack Rose, who is one of the transportation leads of the city and this is an area that he sees some opportunities where he can support some of the city work as well as help us kind of make it real and make it connected with the students in the ritual public schools. And so as we take a look at kind of those broader community partnerships and how do we work with the city and how do we work with the school district and Bloomington Public Health or other groups within the city to really kind of promote a better ritual and an opportunity within the ritual of combining resources to really make that happen in a successful way is one of the great opportunities that I see with this project at this point.
Where is Bloomington at with this?
I do not know. I haven't asked specifically if they are seeking a grant application at the same time either. I know that our partners at Bloomington Public Health feel like there are some projects like this that we are very proactive on and have been kind of leading the way in a number of different areas. I haven't asked specifically if Bloomington or Diner or some of our neighbor communities have done this. I know Minneapolis has a position to help support some of this work.
There are no further questions. We could have a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll move the resolution as presented. I'll move the resolution as presented.
One second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Paulus and a second by Ms. Malik. Is there any discussion? As this is a resolution, I will pull the board. Paulus.
Aye.
Malik.
Aye.
Ashmead.
Aye.
Tenzing.
Aye.
Cole.
Aye.
The chair votes aye and the resolution is approved.
Thank you.
So last but not least in the new business section of our meeting is a first read of a complete overhaul of Board Policy 541 on Student Behavior.
All right. So we're going to do a little bit of overview talk, but probably not dig into this in depth because there is still significant more work to do. Dr. Clarkson has been working with the Safe and Supportive Schools team, a technical team, the attorney for the district. There's been groups of parents, groups of students, groups of teachers and groups of administrators involved in the first draft of a proposed rewrite of our Board Policy 541, Student Behavior and the Administrative Guidelines. We are obviously suggesting a total overhaul and total rewrite, laying out purpose, why we have the policy and talking about what everyone is responsible for, and then talking about within the policy, the development and communication of standards so that we have that system of behavior, discipline, expectations across our entire organization. We're both positive proactive, but then also reactive and consequences related to behavior. Guidelines 541-1 talk further about what each of those pieces look like, what some of those expectations and consequences might be. And then also provides a handy-dandy chart that could be utilized to help us understand what behavior violations, is the terminology, could lead to in terms of sort of level and outcomes. It's both a reorganization but also a substantial rewrite of previous policy. So with that, again, there are 40 pages, give or take, between new revised policy, new revised guideline, old policy, old guideline, which will also go back for several rewrites. So the goal of laying this out before it is honestly fully ready for action is that it's going to take multiple reads for people to have both in board meetings and beyond board meetings because there are many pages with many implications. So I want to bring that to the board today for their first snapshot view.
And I think even, do you have a, a thought on what it will come back to us next? Because I think it's just how to set all of us up to be successful and knowing where this is in the process and when we should be expecting the next round.
I gave the head nod smile to Dr. Clarkson so she can talk about what meetings she has coming up and whether we'll see it on May 6th or the second meeting in May. I do know that our hope is to have handbooks and policies for implementations. We talked about with our other policy about maltreatment. We want our policy training to include discipline and, and, and other policies that are coming. Dr. Clarkson?
So I think just, thank you for laying that out, Dr. Yunowski. One of the things that I think all of the committees are looking for is some feedback from the board based on where we are. What I, I do want to say is that chart, that behavior level discipline chart that has been, that is in the guidelines, has been piloted throughout this year so that we have standardized reporting on incidents and an understanding of what each by definition that everybody could live with. So I think that has been well-vetted. It took about two years to really develop that. So I just want to give that piece of history. We do have a Safe and Supportive Schools Committee coming up mid-May, late May. That will include some of our parents. So I think what would be more helpful is to have feedback from the board so that this, there's a group that is willing to work a little bit this summer with Ed Richfield. Ed Richfield has already laid eyes on it. Principals have laid eyes on it. So now it's, I think, in the board's hands to give us some feedback. And then we could bring it back in June if we get feedback at the next, one of the next two board meetings. And I'd be open to any questions I can have.
And I should say too, I attended a meeting in this room earlier this week with a group of high school students who also read through this and I think did a great job of pulling out some consistent things. But overall, their feedback was, was quite positive and feeling like this was going to be a very helpful step forward. So that was exciting to hear directly from our students.
Just, just to be clear, this, so you're asking us to read it, but, but like in the interim between now and when we get feedback, it's not going to shift or undergo some sort of rewrite? So if we, we read it and it won't be shifted until we have already addressed that?
Absolutely. So it's just looking for board feedback at this point. And I know it's a lot. I will have to say we've had a much longer runway than...
So...
We thank you for that.
Yeah.
Yeah. I feel that there are elements of the policy that are fairly clear-cut and objective when we start talking about some of the more, if you want to call them egregious behaviors. Where, where I would love to see, I don't know, I mean, I'm not 100% sure how, but it, because I think that the egregious behaviors are probably not where most of the work needs to be because these are not very common and probably not the reason that most of our students are on any given day being removed from the classroom. And so it's that removal from the classroom where I feel like that's the piece that we probably need the most focus around and the most support for our teachers because it feels like that's a very, can be a very subjective call that teachers are having to make probably pretty often. So my question is, my assumption is that innocent classroom is sort of informing a big piece of how we support that judgment call on, on when a student needs to be removed. And I guess I would just, I, I guess I don't know how we formalize that in policy. But that's, that would be the one place where I feel like I'm seeing just a little conflict in terms of what that threshold needs to be for removing the student from the classroom.
I would agree. And I'm not sure policy is the place that is going to be able to articulate that really, you know, you know, we'd like that kind of clear cut. When you read the discipline, the level discipline document, there is, it's not, okay, if you, if you, if you participate in a level-one behavior, this is exactly what is going to happen. The area that I think that we have some room for growth on in this policy is really supporting that is the leveled behavior is there could be a range of responses. And level-one behaviors typically should be managed within the classroom. And I think our teachers are asking us, you know, we're being clear that these are classroom-managed. And where we all have to work together is do we have solid interventions to support teachers and students when those behaviors are exhibited? And at what point does it move up to a more, to making the decision to remove the students from the classroom? Innocent classroom should help with the relationship building and addressing how we, what happens. But I think the students, I would, I would venture to say the students were pretty clear that they would like a little bit more consistency from teachers on, can we all agree that, should this behavior be exhibited in a classroom? I'm trying to give a good example that doesn't, that doesn't go too wild. But, you know, if, if a student responds in a way that a teacher finds offensive in the classroom, how is that going to be handled if the teacher, you know? There was discussion where students said, well, can they just take me aside and have that convert, you know, address it instead of calling me out in the classroom? Well, that's, that's a place where our teachers and our students have to learn that there's going to be different responses. But hopefully we would get to a place where a student is removed.
And as you look at the behavior chart, it gives choices or several different options depending. And it's hard when you look at the situation, you look at the student's age, you look at the student's particular...
Developmental level.
Developmental level, there has to be some component of judgment. So things can't get, they won't end up as clean as we want, but definitely worth reviewing and examining classroom removal and when do we make those decisions?
Yep.
I, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say that I do, I mean, the, some of, one of, some of the language that I feel sits well with where we're trying to go with innocent classroom would be in that, in that general statement where we do talk about alternatives to removal will be used unless the behavior, you know, places the student or others in danger or the disruption of the educational environment can only be remedied by a referral. So I mean, I think there we are setting a bit more of a higher standard for what's appropriate for removal as opposed to later in the document. I think that there's a little lower standard and stuff, so, yeah, so I'm going to take a look at.
We will review.
No, one thing I know, that I thought of when I was going through it was to somewhere include that we are taking into consideration students with a 504 and how that might be handled differently. And I don't, overall, like as I was reading it, it, there's kind of, it really felt, I mean, I know it's discipline, but there was kind of a negative adversarial feel. And I would love to see it feel a little bit more like we're all on the same team working to get our students to a certain place. I don't know how possible that is or how we would do it, but I, I don't know. I don't know if anyone else agrees they felt that, like, I know it's discipline, but...
We can certainly look at tone and language and see if there are places, you know, to us in things that we're doing more proactively. Yes, there is the, here is the list of consequences, but there are definitely ways to frame that and look to make sure our language is aligned and make sure that we are putting those proactive components in and doing some more emphasis of that.
The place that we haven't gotten to on the level discipline is the strategies and interventions. So it says these are the, this is the definition. So there is that component that just hasn't been agreed to have built by both the staff and the students. So there's work on level discipline that's yet to be done.
Right. And then if there is ongoing feedback, as Dr. Clarkson pointed out, we will not be doing revision yet. We're waiting, we'll wait on board feedback and then be going to look to bring that feedback and gather additional sets of input from our groups as we continue to work at this.
And is it fair to say that if people would like to have a conversation just one-on-one with you or the superintendent, given the magnitude of this, that that is an option in addition to just board members being able to contact you over email or whatever?
Absolutely.
Great.
Of course. Thank you.
Thank you. So we are moving into the advanced planning section of the agenda, which as always will begin with a legislative update. Superintendent Yunowski or Mr. Tenzing, if there's anything that you'd like to start by sharing?
We are just sitting in that super awkward holding pattern at the moment. And so while the governor and the House are very aligned in their bills, the Senate is very different. And so I'm just going to point again to the areas of significant difference. Overall changes in the proposals. The governor is proposing a 3% increase followed by a 2% increase. And the House is alongside with the Senate projecting a half percent and a half percent. Governor and House are suggesting continuing on with voluntary pre-K second round funding, of which we have. I've actually received a couple inquiries about all-day pre-K and RDLs all-day pre-K. And obviously, we are hanging in the balance in regard to that. The governor and the House have that. That transitions over to scholarship-based monies in the Senate bill. Similarly, special education, there is a maintenance and non-increase of the cross-subsidy in the governor's budget. There is not the same level of funding in the Senate budget. And so those are just very different. There is, I believe it's estimated approximately $500 billion of the biennium differences in the overall budget between the Senate governor and the Senate House with the governor and House aligned. And so impacts for us, obviously staffing, we're in the spring and so we cannot project based on funds that are so far apart. We obviously cannot fund a voluntary pre-K program that we don't know we have. And then obviously the, or that additional, as a reminder, we still have the large voluntary pre-K. We still have the pathway scholarships. These are just those extra 60 seats that we added last year based on the additional funding. Those are the things that both have us short-term with some anxiety about our program. And we aren't able to build what we would want to build. So the faster they come to agreement and resolve, the faster we are able to provide answers to our staff, to our students and to our community.
I don't have too much to add, unfortunately.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So are there any information and/or questions from the board that people would like to share? I will share one thing then. I met with Mayor Reagan Gonzalez the other day. And we have our study session with the city council scheduled now for June 10th at 6:00 PM. And one of the things that she and I discussed was that it could be really helpful to choose one or two priorities for the school district and the city to work on together over the span of the coming year so that all of our respective staffs and all of us are, are clear. This is what we're going to focus on and it might be able to help us just be more accountable to each other into getting some of that work done. Because I think sometimes we can have conversations where we talk about a lot of things, but it's not always clear what are we going to do from this point in time. So I would just encourage people to start thinking about what those items could potentially be. I think there, there could be interest around enrollment, for example. And I know we, we've had a number of, of comments and conversations recently around sustainability and what does it look like to work across city and school there? So just think about what some of those possibilities could be and we could use that at our conversation with them on June 10th.
Yeah, along those lines. And that would, that was what, one of the things that I was going to propose is that in light of the comment that we had from Ms. Lewis earlier today, I think that that study session with the city council, that, that does afford us an opportunity to at least see where we can partner with the city along the sustainability, environmental sustainability work, see what they're doing and where that might align with things that we might want to do. And then I would also, are you ready to move to future agenda items?
Go for it.
All right. Thank you. I guess I would like to propose, I, I think that, you know, relative to the request from the Richfield Solar Justice Environment Group, had to get that right. I feel that there are opportunities, you know, for us to learn, not only as a board, about what is currently going on in the schools to this line, but also to identify opportunities for us to maybe do more. Having said that, I also, I also believe that to do, you know, to sort of get that really comprehensive view of what's going on could be a fairly large undertaking. So I would like to suggest that we do look at a future agenda item on what we're doing around sustainability, both from a curricular perspective. But I also would like to see if we can understand what we're doing around sustainability with sort of our buildings and ground practices, thinking that those two things are pretty distinct in terms of an ask and wanting to make sure that we give the administration adequate time to sort of prepare all of the information that might be necessary. So, I don't know, Steve, I mean, as you, as you sort of think about spoking that out, we, I mean, presumably we would start with building administrators from the, on the curricular side to sort of understand that, kind of surveying across our buildings. Is that how that might look?
If we're talking about curriculum and what is taught to students, I would lean on Dr. Roby and the curricular advisory team to give me some feedback on how long would it take to gather information in relation to that? And if we're talking about things like solar panels at some of our schools or the newly launched based on student interest, some of the recycling work at stations that have launched in our secondary schools, that would be a second group to continue on and, and multiple groups to continue on and gather with. The other question would be, are you asking us to gather this or the terminology? Or are you asking for an audit of all of those practices in a larger report, including data or possible funds saved or expended or things of that nature? So...
Yeah, I think that that's worth having, perhaps having an offline conversation about what sort of makes the most sense because it seems to me that in order for us to come up with something sort of actionable, we would have to kind of get more disciplined about how we're defining those questions so that we can then set some, set some concrete objectives and figure that out. So maybe we can have some offline conversations and... So maybe we can have some offline conversations and, but just keep this on our radar over the next three to six month kind of window.
Agreed. Thank you.
And along the same lines, a set of additional information updates and future agenda item components as a reminder. Okay, so Board Chair Breckie pointed out, uh, study session was moved from May 6th, so we do not have that at that time, um, to June 10th. Uh, we will have upcoming closed sessions coming up for negotiations as obviously about half of our contracts, um, will be expiring in the relatively near future. This is the licensed staff groups. Um, and so I'm looking for, um, closed sessions and negotiations in May. We will also have closed sessions in regard to superintendent evaluation coming up and beginning of goal setting for next year. Um, so we, as we continue to work to balance our agendas, um, we'll continue to do that work and I just wanted to put that on people's radar. Um, release of graduation rate. So just as a reminder, that is going to show up at 7:00 AM tomorrow on the state website. So we'll have that presentation on May 6th for the school board. Um, we do have anticipated phone calls with both, uh, the Sun Current and Star Tribune. Um, and look forward to being part of positive conversation as a district that has had ongoing gains in our graduation rate, ongoing closure of gaps between our white students and students of color. Um, we look forward to, uh, hoping that our data looks similar as we move forward. And so while I cannot share embargo data, I'm excited by our past patterns and look forward to talking to the press about anticipated future and ongoing success in those particular areas. Along those same lines, as we continue to work on customer service, one of the requests and presentations about the high school was around overall schedule release. So we have talked about, um, looking at secondary, opening up the portal for students and parents to access schedules. And so we're looking at moving that timeline forward. We are talking about what changes may or may not, uh, be put in place based on that. Um, we're looking at a schedule opening of the portal and the release of the high school on the Monday of opening week next year would be two days ahead of what our typical release has been, uh, two days ahead of what most of our colleague districts are doing, or two to three days. Um, but can you look at that and see if there is success or if there is, um, any improvements based on that as a possible option? Um, and so looking to do that, um, for the fall. And so that is one of our plans, um, and feedback based on a board question. Obviously, from a capital facility perspective, on a different note, um, as you know, the district office moved, did you see that? Um, we also have ongoing partnerships with a wide range of folks in our community. And so as our, um, project oversight committee, of which John is on, continues their work on an every other week basis. Um, I also wanted to highlight some of the partnerships that we have had. And so we have had a specific recent partnership with the Richfield Disability Group and have made some improvements, um, including bathroom ADA improvements and pointed out some areas that, while they may or may not be required from legal perspective, would align to our board policy and guidance upon supporting our students. Um, finding things in terms of curb cutouts, for example, that might be more successful and entries that might be more successful, um, whether they're ADA compliant or functionally better than ADA compliant. So our project oversight committee and the Richfield Disability Group have been working together, um, to make sure that we are doing the best we can for all of our students. And so we're excited on, based on some of those other partnerships. Um, and then last but not least, um, noticing that some of our grants come to us, we are actually partnered up on a grant with YMCA Beacons, um, which I just recently signed off on and I've shared some information on that. How we were actually approached and asked to be a co-signer on a grant as they are looking to expand their overall enrichment and after-school activities partnerships. Um, they have current partnerships in North Minneapolis with Minneapolis Public Schools and with Brooklyn Center. Um, and YMCA Beacons provides, um, through grants, funds, extracurricular enrichment activities that pair with, um, ALC and targeted services programs. So it typically goes to what's called a 21st Century Grant, um, which is a three-year grant, um, which can then be rolled over and done a second time for an additional three and pretty typically, when approved once, who would be approved pretty typically the second time. Uh, overall total of this grant, if we were to receive it, I bring it up today because we won't know. However, the grant would begin implementation July 1st. Um, approximately $3 million over three years or one, uh, about $900,000 in the first year to launch additional after-school enrichment programs at our high school, our middle school, and its centennial elementary, um, with looking towards possible expansion to other places in the future. And so I wanted to bring that to our attention. We are just a co-signer on that, but would obviously be the place of implementation for the YMCA Beacons enrichment-based program to offer a wide range of opportunities to our students that definitely exist.
Very exciting.
So with that, I will flip it back for questions or others to share information.
So I definitely want to, um, you know, since I was the, um, board member who sort of was at the forefront of asking about the timing and schedule release, I just want to, you know, reflect that I, you know, very grateful for the effort that the administration is getting ready to put in, um, on behalf of our students. I recognize that we are asking, uh, this is an area where we are asking to change a long-established practice for a process that is complex and has a lot of moving parts. And understanding that this would put us ahead of where some of our peer districts are. And I just really believe that this is the right thing to do. Uh, but I'm glad that we're going to be kind of get, gaining some, gathering some feedback on that as well. So the right thing to do, I mean, I feel that, you know, really aligns with our values as a organization that puts the needs of our students first and also one that's not afraid to lead and to have a... And so I'm, I'm, you know, really grateful to the, to the superintendent for taking the leadership on that and for moving that forward. Relative to gathering, um, feedback on any number of the initiatives that we've got going, I would, I think we've really grown substantially as a district in terms of how much attention we are paying to the voice of our students. And I think we have a lot to be proud of in that area. I think we also have continued room for improvement as in so many of the things that we do. And so I'm just reflecting on our practice, our current practice right now with our survey is to gather, formally gather input from primarily adults, um, within our community. Um, and I think that we have opportunities to be more formal or more, uh, proactive about, about gathering feedback from students of any, a range of any number of initiatives that we're working on. So just encourage administration and perhaps our student leaders to think about, um, how we can do that better as an organization.
Absolutely. So thank you for that. Um, we did have a survey of our students actually in development and the team, um, Drs. Clarkson and Roby decided, um, based on some input, to hold off on that till the fall. And so that might be good timing as we look to survey about our school climate and our culture and gather that voice from our students, um, to look at accommodating and gathering some feedback on schedule at that time also.
Seeing no other comments that look like they're about to come. Um, our next meeting will be on Monday, May 6th, as we've discussed, and will feature a presentation from the Richfield College Experience Program and a presentation about our 2018 graduation rate results, which I think we'll all be excited to, um, really dive into in much more depth. So I believe that is the end of our business this evening and we could entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Paulus, a second by Mr. Ashmead. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the meeting is adjourned at 8:30, 8:00 PM. I'll do the gavel to make it official.